Exit the chamber, make a left-hand turn, then a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. Please stand now and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are we on?
Not on Zoom.
Just bear with us for a second. We have a little technical difficulty. This is how many council people does it take? Mayor.
He's coming.
He's coming?
Oh, we have to...
So it's Thanksgiving.
We have to let him have it when he comes in, too.
We're almost there. I hope. Oh, that looks familiar.
Then Hurst is in.
Will I still need to sign on here?
There we go. There we go. Yes, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you.
This evening, thank you. This evening, it's obvious that we do not have the full council present, but we do have, by way of Zoom, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Blake. Good evening, ladies. At this point, I'll invite Reverend Norman Hancock of St. Thomas Anglican Church to give the invocation. Reverend Hancock.
Mayor, council members. Are you lucky enough to be here tonight? This will only take about 30 minutes, so relax. It's a great night to be alive, isn't it?
Yes.
All right. Well, let's pray. You know, some people bow their heads, some people lift up their eyes to the sky and maybe not the ceiling, but however you're comfortable in praying, please pray with me. Heavenly Father, as we approach this national seizing season of Thanksgiving, may we give thanks to God Almighty for all His gifts so freely given to our nation. May He bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure conduct. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion. Save us from pride and arrogance and from every evil. We also pray for those in our community who are less fortunate, especially the youth and children who are in need of a safe place and kind hearts. May individuals and agencies be provided to offer care, counseling, and shelter. Heavenly Father, we ask you to provide wisdom and guidance for this city council and mayor this evening as they deal with issues of property annexation, emergency housing, ways to assist the homeless, and ways to help our local law enforcement agency. Help us all to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. And may the efforts of all here this evening be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom as we seek to serve with respect for all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Hancock. Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. I know the council members are going to be aware that it is National Runaway Prevention Month, but as we recognized it last week at our open house. But for those of you who don't know, National Runaway Prevention Month began in 2002 and is spearheaded each year by the National Runaway Safeline, or NRS, the federally designated national communication system for runaway and homeless youth. And the prevalence of runaway and homelessness among youth is staggering, with studies suggesting that every year 4.2 million people ages 13 to 25 endure some form of homelessness. Runaway youth often expelled from their homes have experienced abuse and trauma, are involved in the foster care system, are too poor to secure their own basic needs, and may be ineligible or unable to access adequate medical or mental health resources. Children and youth who run away are at increased danger for falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking. Effective programs supporting runaway youth and assisting youth and their families in providing safe and stable homes succeed because of partnerships created among families, youth-based advocacy organizations, community-based human service agencies, law enforcement, schools, faith-based organizations, and businesses. Phoenix Youth Project here in Salisbury Incorporated in this community is just such a program under the leadership of Executive Director Amber Green, which provides effective support for marginalized youth through a variety of programs and offers a drop-in center as a resource for youth ages 13 to 24 who are experiencing a housing crisis or homelessness. They need basic resources, including food, personal need items, and laundry services, or may just need people to love and accept them as they are. Phoenix Youth Project programming provides access to resources designed to help them build and gain leadership skills and to become actively engaged in social justice and community issues. The city of Salisbury joins the National Runaway Safeline and Phoenix Youth Project Incorporated in recognizing November as National Runaway Prevention Month to raise awareness of the issues facing runaway and homeless youth and to educate the public about solutions and the role of community members can play in ending youth homelessness. Now therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as National Runaway Prevention Month in our city, and I urge all citizens to support the effort to increase public awareness and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaway and homeless youth and their families.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids. I'm sorry, to adopt the legislative agenda first.
Sue moved.
Mr. Boda, do I have a second?
April's saying second.
April, I think you're, yeah, April's saying second, but you're muted.
No, she's not.
Is she? You're not.
Angela, can you, can we hear you?
I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Okay. All right, then, the second was by Ms. Jackson?
April, yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 There we go.
And the chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is adopted by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion now to approve the award of bids.
Sue move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Mrs. Miller, good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. We have four items this evening, two award of bids and two requests for surplus. So we'll go through the award of bids first. The Department of Procurement does seek approval from the city council for two procurement awards and two requests for surplus, as I mentioned. For the first award, RFP 22-101, that's the disposition of Mitchell Landing. The city followed required bidding practices by publicly posting the solicitation three separate times in a local newspaper, in addition to being publicly posted on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal and the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. So again, this was RFP 22-101, disposition of Mitchell Landing. The requesting department was the Executive Office and the Office of Housing and Community Development. The proposal request specified that we were looking to obtain a qualified applicant to purchase and operate the Mitchell Landing multifamily complex, subject to all valid and existing lease agreements. The proposal dates, the dates that were advertised, was October 4th, October 5th, and October 6th. Proposals were opened on November 11th. The city of Salisbury received one proposal. That was from Green Street Housing LLC from Salisbury, Maryland. The proposal was evaluated according to the evaluation criteria in the proposal document. For Green Street Housing to receive a proposal score of 99.33. The total offer price was $1,381,806. What we're requesting at this time is an award of a land disposition contract to Green Street Housing.
Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Just, I think it's another step. So we got to do the land disposition contract after this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, very good. The next item is ITB 22-114. This is a street sweeper for the Department of Field Operations. It's a 2022 street sweeper. We would like to piggyback on the Virginia Sheriff's Office Contract Number 22-03-0721 for heavy equipment. We, this is under the general policy of competitive bidding, exceptions for the city of Salisbury, where we can receive a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity. The vendor would be THC Enterprises Incorporated, otherwise known as Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems. The total cost for this piece of equipment is $270,772.20. The GL account noted is properly funded, and the lead time is about 120 to 180 days after receipt of order.
Questions? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda? Is the other one going to last 120 days or the 280 days?
Ben Baker from the Department of Field Operations is on the call as well. He's going soon.
Is this going to cause us a problem or?
No, this is going to actually replace one that we've been wanting to replace for the last couple of years. And by us getting the awarded bid for this one will actually give us four sweepers on the streets, which will be obviously extraordinary for us picking up the debris and keeping up with our MS4s.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to the surplus items here. Hang on just a sec. Okay, all right. The first item is a request for surplus for parking lot number 15. It's parcel 1066. This is on the corner of Camden and Market Streets in downtown Salisbury. It's just under a 20,000-square-foot property. It's currently used as a public parking lot. It has 32 permit spaces and 17-metered spaces. Both mayor and city administration really believe it to be in the city's best interest to divest of the property for the purposes of encouraging further redevelopment of the downtown area by private entities. Pursuant to Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury, Maryland Code of Ordinances, city-owned real property must be deemed surplus by the Director of Procurement, who's then to make a recommendation to city council as to the sale or disposition of such real property. If that is approved, the Department of Procurement would then be invited to invite proposals for development or prepare an advertisement for auction sale. What we would be recommending is that it would be a public real estate sale through KLMB, the city's contracted commercial real estate broker. In your packet, I did include a plat map and an S dat as well.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda? Okay.
Okay, and the last item is for the Salisbury Police Department. It's three Motorola radios and some miscellaneous accessories that go along with it. We anticipate that the method of public disposition would be a public auction sale. The city uses GovDeals, so it's online, open to the public. Any additional details are noted in the departmental memo. So at this time, the Department of Procurement does hereby request council's approval to award the contracts noted to the vendors as indicated and allow us to proceed with the disposition of the items requested for surplus designation.
Questions? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. Okay. All right, if there's no further questions, I will call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids and the surplus, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Motion to award the bids is approved by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Have a good evening. Mr. Kitro, it's good to have you.
Hi there. How are you doing?
Happy birthday, by the way.
Thank you. It has been a birthday of sorts.
I gather that. Okay, I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3131.
Sue move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Kitro.
One second just to get to the right page.
Page 28.
28. All right, Resolution Number 3131, Resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing annexation of the city of Salisbury of certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as Beaver Run Drive, PennTex Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits lines of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of the Wauston Switch Road at its intersections with the northerly right-of-way line of US Route 50, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point beginning, being all that real property identified as map, excuse me, right-of-way, affected property to the point beginning, real property identified as map 39, parcel 264, block A, lots 1 and 2, and a portion of the public road right-of-way known as the Wauston Switch Road, containing 3.808 acres more or less. Whereas the city of Salisbury has received a petition for annexation dated May 6, 2021, attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters and of the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of the real property in the area sought to be annexed, binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, to be known as a Beaver Run Drive, PennTex Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of Wauston Switch Road at its intersections with the northerly right-of-way line of US Route 50, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as map 39, parcel 264, block A, lots 1 and 2, and all the certain portions of the public road right-of-way known as Wauston Switch Road, and further being the same real property more particularly described in the property descriptions attached heretofore as Exhibit 2, and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, being the same public right-of-way, more particularly depicted on the certain plat entitled Annexation Boundary Exhibit, attached heretofore as Exhibit 3, incorporated as if fully set forth here and the aforementioned real property herein, too, referred to as annexed property. And whereas the city has caused to be made a certification of the signatures on the said petition for the annexation, and the city of Salisbury has verified that the person signing the petition and representing at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners owning 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed, all of July 19, 2021, is set forth in the certifications by Leslie C. Sherrill, Surveyor of the City of Salisbury, attached heretofore as Exhibit 4, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. And whereas it appears that the, for said petition for annexation dated May 6, 2021, meets all the requirements of applicable state and local law. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution provided for the city of Salisbury annexation of the annexed property as set forth herein shall be and hereby is scheduled for January 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that, there's two that's, take one of those out, that the municipal boundaries of the city of Salisbury be changed so as to annex to and include within the said municipal boundaries of the city of Salisbury all that certain real property more particularly described as Exhibits 2 and 3, attached here, 2, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth here, the real property to be annexed by the city of Salisbury as contemplated by the resolution is hereinafter referred to as annexed property. Section 2, the annexation of the annexed property be hereby is approved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, subject to all terms, conditions, and agreements contained in the aforementioned property description. The proposed annexation agreement and annexation plan attaches Exhibits 2, 5, and 6, respectively, each of which is attached here, 2, and incorporated herein as if all such terms, conditions, agreements contained in such exhibits were specifically set forth at length in this resolution. Section 3, the zoning map of the city of Salisbury should be amended to include the annexed properties within the certain zoning district of the city of Salisbury identified as mixed-use, nonresidential, which said real property newly annexed into the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury as contemplated by this resolution is presently zoned LB-1 light business and industrial, excuse me, LB-I light business and industrial in accordance with existing zoning laws of Wacomico County, Maryland. Section 4, pursuant to MD Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on the resolution on January 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the Council of Chambers at the city's county office building. And the city administration should cause a public notice at the time and place of the said public hearing to be published not fewer than two times and not less than two, not less than weekly intervals in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the city of Salisbury, which said public notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold the aforementioned public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified here above. And be it further resolved by the Council in the city of Salisbury as follows. Section 5 is the intention of this Council of the City of Salisbury. Each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent and all other provisions herein. And Section 6, it is further intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, a paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 7, the recitals set forth herein above are incorporated into the section of this resolution as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 7. Section 8, the resolution and the annexation of the annexed property as contemplated herein shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following any final pass of subject, however, to the right of referendum with respect to this resolution set forth in Maryland Code Local Government Board 401, that sec.
Thank you, Mr. Kitro. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
I just have one, this may be trivial, but it says in a newspaper. Can that be electronic?
Published, I think, in a newspaper is how.
So who do we, who do we use now, independent?
Daily Times.
Daily?
Because, yeah, they're the only one in the city limits, the last I heard.
I just want to make sure that we're covered on the, okay, so we're all right.
About the Salisbury Independent?
I don't think they're in the city. Are they?
Office is right across the street.
They are considered as being a publication located inside the city of Salisbury. Whether they're considered a publication that is valid for purposes of the legally required public notice is a question that was actually posed to the local judiciary, and they were getting some type of guidance that would impact not only publications for annexations like this one, but also publications for tax sales and of other type of real property proceedings. Last I understood, it was not, it was not decided whether or not that was a publication that would be considered a valid publication for compliance with the public notice requirements under state law.
As long as we're covered now, and if they go out, then we have to look at something else, obviously, because the way things are going, it's going all electronic now, pretty much.
Not only are we covered by what we, by the process that we follow right now, but we pay the price for that. They certainly charge for public notices in accordance with their need for revenue.
Okay. Okay, then, hearing no other questions, I'll, we'll call the motion. Mayor, do you have any comments? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3131, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3131 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3132.
Sue move.
Mr. Boda made the motion. Could I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jackson, second. Thank you. Mr. Kitro.
All right, Resolution Number 3132, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as Beaver Run Drive, PennTex Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of the Wauston Switch Road at its intersection with the northerly right-of-way line of US Route 50, continually around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all that real property identified as map 39, parcel 264, block A, lots 1 and 2, and a portion of the public road right-of-way known as Wauston Switch Road, containing 3.08 acres more or less. Whereas pursuant to the certain petitions for annexation dated May 6, 2021, attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein, the city of Salisbury proposes the annexation of that certain lot and proposal of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of Wauston Switch Road at its intersection with the northerly right-of-way line of US Route 50, continually around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as map 39, parcel 264, blocks A, lots 1 and 2, and all that certain proportions of the public road right-of-way known as Wauston Switch Road, further being the same real property more particularly described in the property description attached heretofore as Exhibit 2, and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, being the same public right-of-way, more publicly depicted on the certain plat entitled Annexation Boundary Exhibit, attached heretofore as Exhibit 3, and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, the aforementioned real property is hereinafter referred to annexed property. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-415, the city of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of the annexed property. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution providing for the Council of the City of Salisbury approved of the annexation plan as defined here and below for the city of Salisbury annexing, annexation of the annexed property as set forth herein shall be and hereby is scheduled for January 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section one, the annexation plan for Beaver Run PennTex Annexation to the City of Salisbury attached hereto as exhibit four and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, the annexation plan being hereby is adopted for the City of Salisbury annexation of the annexed property as contemplated by resolution. Section two, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on this resolution on January 10, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the city council, sorry, city county office building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published not fewer than two times at not less than weekly intervals in at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said public notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold the aforesaid public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified herein above. And be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section three, it is the intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four, it is further the intention of the Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution so be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under the applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision as so judged, so adjudged, and all of the provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of this resolution as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section five, section six. The resolution and annexation of the annexed property as contemplated herein shall take effect upon the expiration of 45 days following its final passage, subject, however, to the right of referendum with respect to this resolution as set forth in Maryland Code Local Government 4-401. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kitrow. Comments or questions? Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 3132, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution number 3132 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3135.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Kitrow?
Resolution number 3135, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, an amended and restated annexation agreement with Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions governing the prior annexation and future development of that certain real property identified as part of map 29 parcel 219. Whereas pursuant to resolution number 119, the annexation resolution passed by the Council of the City of Salisbury, the Council, on March 14, 2005, the city approved the annexation of all the certain real property described in exhibit A of the annexation resolution. Subject to those certain terms and conditions set forth in exhibits B and C of the annexation resolution governing the city's annexation of the annexed property, exhibits B through C of the annexation resolution are herein after referred to collectively as the original agreement. And whereas the annexed property includes a certain real property owned by Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC, known as a petitioner, being part of that certain lot and parcel of the land identified as map 29 parcel 219, inconsistent of I approximately 24.11 acres of land, more or less, identifying as parcel G, the development property, on that certain proposed re-subdivision platent title, re-subdivision of lots 41-66, 75 to 92, and 98 to 116, parcel E and parcel F, Summers Gate Final Subdivision Plat for Vantage Point at Summers Gate LLC, dated October 5, 2020, prepared by Parker and Associates, Inc., the res, this is the re, excuse me, the re-subdivis, re-subdivision plat, a copy of the aforesaid proposed re-subdivision plat is attached here to incorporated herein as exhibit A. And number two, approximately 2.65 acres of land, more or less identified as parcel J on the re-subdivision plat, parcel J and the development property are herein to refer to as collectively as the Vantage Point parcels. And whereas petitioners' desires to develop the Vantage Point parcels but due to the market changes from the date of their original agreement to the date hereof, the city and petitioners have determined that the terms and conditions set forth in the original agreement makes such development of the Vantage Point parcels infeasible. And whereas the city pursuant to the authority contained in the Maryland Code Local Government sections 1 dash, excuse me, 4 dash 104, and petitioners have agreed to amend the terms and conditions contained in the original agreement as more particularly set forth in the amended and restated annexation agreement here, attached here to and incorporated herein as exhibit A. And whereas by the resolution, the council hereby approves amended agreement attached here to and incorporated herein as exhibit B, and hereby authorize the mayor's execution thereof on behalf of the city and upon the mayor's execution of the amended agreement, all of the terms set forth in the amended agreement shall be deemed and otherwise construed to supersede and replace the original agreement. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section one, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salisbury that certain amended and restated annexation agreements by and between the City of Salisbury and Vantage Point Salisbury Partners I LLC, attached here to incorporated herein as exhibit B, the amended agreement, uh-oh, excuse me. I just, I reset my entire document.
Page number, help?
Got it, no, yep, it just, it put me all the back at the beginning. Sorry about that.
Failing.
All right, I think I was on section two. Section two, it is the intention of the mayor and the council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all provisions herein. Section three, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall be, shall apply only to the sections, paragraphs, subsections, clause, or provisions so judged, and all other provisions of the resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth herein above are incorporated into this section of this resolution as if such recitals were specifically set forth in length in this section four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitrow. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda? Hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 3135, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution number 3135 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3136.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Kitrow?
Resolution number 3136, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement with Delmarver Power &amp; Light Company to obtain a license for the purpose of installing and maintaining a new welcome gateway sign. Whereas the City of Salisbury desires to install a new welcome gateway sign welcoming visitors and residents to the City of Salisbury and property owned by Delmarver Power &amp; Light Company, located at 2530 North Salisbury Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland. And whereas before commencing work to install said sign, Delmarver Power has requested the City of Salisbury enter into a license agreement attached here to, and whereas the license agreement attached here to will be grant the City of Salisbury the right to install, repair, and maintain a sign on the property of Delmarver Power, and sets forth the rights and obligations of all parties thereto. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into the attached license agreement with Delmarver Power on behalf of the City of Salisbury. Be it further resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. If any subsection, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable state or federal, and such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so judged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain valid and enforceable. And that the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into the section of this resolution as if specifically set forth at length herein. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitrow. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Delmarver Power to offer us the ability to put the gateway sign there. It's much appreciated, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of resolution number 3136, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Resolution number 3136 is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a resolution, I want to entertain a motion for, approve resolution number 3137.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Blake? Mr. Kitrow?
Resolution number 3137, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, an amended and restated land disposition agreement with Salisbury Development Group LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions governing the sale and redevelopment of the Port of Salisbury Marina. Whereas this mayor and the council of the City of Salisbury determined there is a surplus real property owned by the City of Salisbury that shall be redeveloped, and furthermore, that there is a strong public need for increased infill development within the city. Whereas the city is the owner of all that certain real property identified as map 0106 parcel 1100, Maryland tax account number 09-067612, parcel 1100, and map 0106 parcel 1108, Maryland tax account number 090-057919, parcel 1108, parcel 1100, and parcel 1108 are herein after referred to as the Port of Salisbury Marina property. Whereas on June 14, 2016, the city declared the Port of Salisbury Marina property surplus property. Whereas pursuant to 16-8 of the City of Salisbury Charter in chapter 2.36 of the City, Salisbury City Code, the city has the right to offer at public sale property declared surplus and to make awards thereof in the best interest of the city. Whereas the city-owned surplus property shall be delivered not only in consideration of the highest bid price, but in consideration of the type of development proposed, and such development should require a commitment from the purchaser to develop such city-owned surplus property in a manner that will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of the citizens of, the city of, excuse me, citizens of the city. And whereas in accordance with the foregoing, the city determined it to be in the best interest of the citizens of the city to sell and lease the surplus property defined herein as the Port of Salisbury, Port of Marina property, whereas the City of Salisbury advertised for proposals for the purpose, excuse me, for the purchase and redevelopment of the Port of Salisbury Marina property as more particularly set forth in RFP 09-16, rebid disposition and development of the Port of Salisbury Marina, the Marina Landing RFP, three times from June 14, 2016 to June 16, 2016, and responses were due from interested parties by June 28, 2016. Whereas pursuant to resolution number 2639, council selected the proposal submitted by Salisbury Development Group LLC dated January 22, 2016, as the warty of the Marina Landing RFP, and in accordance therewith authorized the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into the certain land disposition agreement dated July 7, 2016, with Salisbury Development Group LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions governing the Salisbury Development Group LLC purchase, lease, and redevelopment of the Port of Salisbury Marina as more particularly set forth therein originally LDA. Whereas for various reasons, including the global COVID-19 pandemic, the Salisbury Development Group LLC purchase, lease, and redevelopment of the Port of Salisbury Marina property has been delayed, and the City of Salisbury develop, excuse me, and the City and the Salisbury Development Group LLC have agreed to amend the original LDA in its entirety as more particularly set forth in the amended and restated land disposition agreement, the amended LDA, attached here to and incorporated herein as exhibit A, to provide the rights and obligations of the city and the Salisbury Development Group LLC with respect to the following, Salisbury Development Group LLC purchase of such portions of the Port of Salisbury Marina property as described in the amended LDA. Salisbury, number two, Salisbury Development Group LLC leases such portions of the Port of Salisbury Marina as described in the amended LDA, and number three, sets other matters relating to the Salisbury Development Group LLC purchase, lease, redevelopment, and of the Salisbury Marina property, subject to the terms and conditions contained in the amended LDA. And whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves the amended LDA attached here to incorporated herein as exhibit A, and number two, hereby authorize the mayor execution thereof on behalf of the city, and whereas upon the mayor's execution of the amended LDA on behalf of the city as authorized, herein too, all the terms set forth in the amended LDA shall be deemed otherwise construed to supersede and replace in its entirety the original LDA. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows. Section one, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salisbury that certain amended and restated land disposition agreement, and by, between the City of Salisbury and Salisbury Development Group LLC, attached here to incorporated herein as exhibit A. Section two, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section three, it is further the intention of the mayor, the council of the City of Salisbury that in the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution so be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision as adjudged, and all of the provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth here in, in exhibit A attached here to, and all other exhibits attached thereto and incorporated therein are incorporated in this section of the ordinance as if such recitals of the exhibit A are specifically set forth at the length of this, I think it said, section of the ordinance, section of the resolution, and such recitals in exhibit A with, were here, excuse me, were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitrow. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
Um, yes, um, I'd like to know, what is the true value of the surplus property? Nothing?
No, surplus.
I understand that, but, I mean.
If it's surplus, that means its value is zero.
I was listening to Andy, but where is this surplus property at? I mean, where is it actually located?
As we said in the, in the work session, it's across, it's next to the river, and goes up towards river edge and includes the marina.
This is the same property that's been on the council's agenda about 22 times from 2015 to.
I, I understand that, and, I mean, don't get upset because I'm asking questions. I mean, I'm just asking because I like to know. I mean, because we're giving that much property away, actually, because that's what we're doing? I don't, I don't understand it, but, hmm, that's, that's quite a bit of property.
Well, the benefits in the future are the tax, taxes we'll collect from the property once the marina is built.
I understand that, too. I do understand that, too, but that's quite a bit of property to consider surplus, but it's neither here nor there. Gone.
I'll say something. Okay, Ms. Blake?
Uh, the only thing I have is, um, for the redevelopment, do we already have a developer with a proposed development just for that section, or is that part of the port, the overall port development?
It has nothing to do with the port development. This is the marina, which has been, the development plan has already been through Council and the Planning Commission and will be through final Planning Commission December.
December.
No, that's it. That's it.
Mr. Boda?
I think maybe if we go back, because I think when this started, Ms. Blake was not on the Council at the time. So there's two pieces to the property. There's the piece where they're going to build the residential development. That's basically that parking lot. Then there's the marina, which is people that rent boat slips and stuff like that. So that's a separate piece of the property, but it's part of the package. The lot piece that's going to be developed is being sold.
To be on the marina.
In the marina, we still own it. We're just leasing it to them for 50 years. So we will always retain ownership of the marina, and a lot of that has to deal with grants and environmental regulations and stuff like that, but they will operate the marina for us. We don't really make that much money from the parking lot. We don't get any tax revenue, and it's a burden, which is essentially what is going to be developed. So that will ultimately become, we will receive, for as long as we're a city, property taxes from that property.
No parking lot will be developed. The empty land is being developed. The parking lot will remain a parking lot.
Will that be a city parking lot still?
Yes.
Okay, but that other piece of land is just, oh, it's the one up front.
Just that vacant land. Only the vacant land is being developed.
And then we're not having the expense of having, and the headache of having to run the marina. They will do that for us. So that's the upside to it.
President Keith, can I speak?
So, wait a minute. So we're leasing, we're going to lease this one.
Leasing it to the company that's going to run the...
Comments? I think Mr. Weisner wanted to make a comment, but that's appropriate at the end of the meeting.
No, I wish I could speak now.
I will call for your comments at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Council?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Mr. Mayor, do you want anything? Do you want to make any comments?
Sure. This has come before Council numerous times. It's been unanimous every time. The surplus, the award, the ENP, the LDA, the first LDA, and now every single time. I think obviously there's a, you know, there's an outside influence at the moment, but clearly...
Oh, no. No, 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 Jake. Don't do that. Don't do that. I asked a question about something.
Ms. Jackson, let the mayor, I'll call you.
No, 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 no. No, Jack, because I don't like that. No, Jack.
I will call you as soon as he's finished.
No, that's not right. That's not right. There's no outside influence on anything. I have the right to ask questions.
You do, and you can as soon as he's finished. The Mayor currently has the floor.
No, I don't like that assumption.
Mr. Mayor?
As I was saying, so this has been voted on multiple times, the surplus, the award, the ENP, the LDA, unanimous each time, but there is, and whether or not it has any influence on anyone, and I don't think it does actually, Ms. Jackson, I don't think it has any influence on you or anybody else on this Council, but there is an outside source of questions, and we can get to that at some point, but pretty clearly, the Council has thus far supported each of the steps in this process, and it is nearing its conclusion, and I think, you know, nearing the conclusion of the process is not the time to derail the process. The time to, you know, consider alternatives is at the beginning of the process, not at the end.
Okay, then let me say something. Nobody's influenced me. I influenced my own self. I asked these questions because I wanted to know. Nobody has an influence over me except for myself, okay? And because I asked questions about the value of the property, it caused a concern, then I'm sorry, because I have that right to ask those questions. But Jake, I'm still on the same page. It doesn't change what I, I asked the question because I needed to know, but to assume that somebody has an influence over somebody, I just, I'm agreeing with that.
Can I respond to that?
I don't agree with that, and, you know, that's just me, that's just how I am. I'm going to say what's on my mind. I, you know, I just didn't like that assumption.
You have every right to ask questions and state your opinion, and it will be respected. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to respond to that. So, April, my comment isn't that anyone has influenced you, but there is a source of questions that didn't exist before and has appeared in the last 24 hours, not even the last 24 hours, in the last six hours, and that is the source of a lot of the questions here. That has nothing to do with what's influencing you or not, but I think it's got to be addressed, and I'll address that further later tonight.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3137, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3137 is approved by a vote of four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kitzrow. Good evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, Council President, members of the Council. Ordinance...
Let me, I have to get a motion first. I want to entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2694 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2694, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the Mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Somerset County Health Department for the purpose of accepting emergency housing program grant funds in the amount of $34,000 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the 2021 cold weather shelter. Whereas the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development has awarded SFY21 Emergency Housing Program funding to the Somerset County Health Department. Whereas the City of Salisbury submitted a grant application to the Somerset County Health Department for funding to support the 2021 cold weather shelter. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the city EHP grant funds in the amount of $34,000. Whereas the City of Salisbury must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Somerset County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. Whereas all funds shall be used for operational costs and essential services for the FY21 cold weather shelter. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires the expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the Mayor and four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Somerset County Health Department on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $34,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Subsection A, increase DHCD backslash EHP Somerset County Health Department Revenue Account Number 10530-42364-604-XXXX by $34,000. Subsection B, increase cold weather shelter operating expense account number 10530-546006-XXXX by $34,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section three, it is in intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four, it is further in the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda?
No questions.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2694, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2694 for the second reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2695 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2695, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Department of Transportation Alternatives Program for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $597,024 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the citywide bike network design project. Whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation administers a transportation alternative grants program. Whereas the City of Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development has awarded a TA program grant, has been awarded a TA program grant in the amount of $597,024 from M.D.S.H.A. for the purpose of designing a citywide bike network. Whereas this project will enhance bicycle safety and improve transportation alternatives for the population of the city. Whereas all funds shall be used for the purpose of designing a citywide bike network. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the Mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland Department of Transportation Transportation Alternatives Program on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $597,024. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Subsection A, increase M.D. Revenue Account Number 10500-425805-XXXX by $597,024. Subsection B, increase engineering expense account number 10500-513020-XXXX by $597,024. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section three, it is in intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four, it is further in the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda?
That's a nice size of money for our bike network, so that's going to help a lot.
Yep. All right, hearing no other comments or questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2695 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
If I may?
Sure, go right.
Just today, earlier today, the, some updated bike network numbers came through our MOVE SVY initiative, right, Amanda? Checking with the expert. We have since 2017 doubled bike lane network in the city, bike lane miles in the city, increased by 3,200% the bike lanes on arterial and connector roads, or collector roads, excuse me, and we are, what's the last, and we're halfway with our 2017 bike master plan, halfway, and this will finish the design of the remaining 50%, complete funding for the design of the remaining 50%.
Thank you.
Pretty good stage.
Did I announce the vote?
Yes.
I can't remember. Did I? I did. Want me to do it again?
You did, yes.
Oh, I did. Okay, great. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2696 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2696, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with the United States Conference of Mayors for the purpose of accepting police reform and racial justice grant program funds in the amount of $75,000 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds so that they may be applied to the Salisbury Police Mental Health Collaborative Partnership. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department has awarded a grant in the amount of $75,000 from the United States Conference of Mayors and Target Corporation to be applied to salary support of a collaboration between mental health professionals and the Salisbury Police Department. Whereas mental health professionals from within the community and the Salisbury Police Department will train together to develop best practices for a co-responder model with regard to service calls involving persons appearing to be mentally ill, substance abusers and/or homeless. Whereas the goal of training and developing a co-responder model is for the mental health professionals and the Salisbury Police Department to better understand each other's role while providing the best assistance to the public at large. Whereas the above described collaboration and development of a co-responder model will lessen the possibility for negative police encounters as well as lessen the possibility of injuries to members of the public, law enforcement, mental health professionals and other responders. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department shall utilize all grant funds for salary support for both mental health professionals and the Salisbury Police Department. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the Mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Conference of Mayors on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $75,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Subsection A, increase U.S. Conference of Mayors Revenue Account Number 10500-XXXX -XXXX by $75,000. Subsection B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by $75,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, as follows: Section three, it is in intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section four, it is further in the intention of the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions, no comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
I think this is going to be a great program, especially once we get it going.
I agree. This is actually an extension of SWIFT, if you look at it, and I think that, if anybody sees 60 Minutes on this past week, there was a discussion where, I forget what state it was in, but they've seen, they did this exact thing, and they've seen a reduction in the amount of calls based on the fact that the caseworker can handle it and that releases the officers from doing. Plus, they're also great at minimizing tensions, so I think it's a very good thing, very good part. No other questions or comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2696 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2696 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. I want to entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2697 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Number 2697, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the Mayor to enter into a contract with the Somerset County Health Department for the purpose of accepting emergency solutions grants, CARES Act funds in the amount of $117,600 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for a homeless services case specialist, rabid rehousing rental assistance, portable toilets and hand washing stations. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department has been charged with the administration of grant funds received by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, emergency solutions grants, a program under the coronavirus aid relief... the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act of 2020, to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus among individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance, and to support additional homeless assistance and homelessness prevention activities to mitigate the impacts created by coronavirus. Whereas, the city of Salisbury submitted a grant application to the Somerset County Health Department for funding to hire an additional homeless services case specialist, provide additional rapid rehousing rental assistance to homeless clients, and provide funding for two portable toilets and two hand washing stations for one year. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the city ESG-CV2 grant funds in the amount of $117,600. Whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Somerset County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended, whereas all funds shall be used to hire a new homeless services case specialist, provide additional rapid rehousing rental assistance, and provide funding for two portable toilets and two hand washing stations for one year. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury, whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Somerset County Health Department on behalf of the city of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $117,600. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHCD/ESG-CV2 revenue account number 10530-423603-XXX by $117,600. Subsection B, increase city grant match revenue account number 10530-499000-XXX by $6,298. Subsection C, increase, excuse me, subsection C, increase salaries, non-clerical expense account number 10530-501002-XXX by $36,792. Subsection D, increase FICA expense account number 10530-502010-XXX by $2,815. Subsection E, increase health insurance expense account number 10530-502020-XXX by $14,944. Subsection F, increase life insurance expense account number 10530-502030-XXX by $26. Subsection B, increase retirement expense account number 10530-502041-XXX by $3,889. Subsection H, increase workers' comp expense account number 10530-502070-XXX by $1,832. Subsection I, increase operating expense account number 10530-546006-XXX by $3,600. Subsection J, increase rapid rehousing rental assistance expense account number 10530-534505-XXX by $60,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3, is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the Section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda?
No question.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2697 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2697 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. Ms. Chestnut? Go get them. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2698 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 2698, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2022 general fund budget to adjust the Salisbury Police Department's pay plan for the purpose of recruiting and retaining experienced officers and to be competitive with area agencies. Whereas, the Salisbury Police Department has the need to provide police personnel with personal growth and career development, whereas a career development program provides trained and experienced police personnel with skill enhancement opportunities. Whereas this department desires to provide every employee with the opportunity to realize professional fulfillment through personal and professional growth. Whereas the Salisbury Police Department needs to offer a competitive salary pay scale and career advancement program to retain experienced police professionals who are committed to increasing the department's ability to maintain a high level of operational readiness, whereas an adjustment of the police department's salary pay scale would result in better recruitment and better retention of experienced police professionals. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2022 adopted police department pay scale be and hereby is amended as set forth in the pay scale included within ordinance number 2698. Be it further ordained and enacted by the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's police department pay plan be amended, and this ordinance shall take effect on December 18th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No questions.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda?
It's very competitive right now, hiring law enforcement officers across the board. It's a national issue. So hopefully this can help us hire more officers and retain.
Yeah, retention is also a significant problem. So, hearing none, hearing no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2698 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2698 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I can just comment, on behalf of our police officers, let me just say, thank you. It is difficult to not only attract officers. Right now, nobody wants to be a police officer. But on top of that, it's tough to hold on to the ones we have. So thank you.
Yeah. You're very welcome. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2699 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This reading goes out to Cory. Thank you for sticking around for this. Ordinance number 2699, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, authorizing the mayor to accept additional grant funding from the Maryland Department of the Environment Bay Restoration Fund, and to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2022 general fund budget to appropriate such MDE BRF funds for repair and maintenance projects to be completed at the wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the city of Salisbury is eligible to receive operation and maintenance grant funds from the Maryland Department of the Environment through the Bay Restoration Fund based on the performance of the wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the city's FY 22 budget ordinance number 2660 Schedule C listed the MDE BRF O&amp;M grant for FY 22 in the amount of $255,000. And whereas due to the exemplary performance of the wastewater treatment plant in calendar year 2020, the city was awarded $439,966 in MDE BRF O&amp;M grant funds resulting in an award that is $184,966 more than the anticipated amount of BRF O&amp;M funding set forth in the FY 22 Schedule C. Whereas the city has received payment in full for the total grant award amount from MDE and desires to utilize those funds to implement projects at the wastewater treatment plant. Whereas the Department of Water Works desires to replace the HVAC system in the main operations building and design and construct upgrades to the electrical system. Whereas the two projects are part of the operations and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant and are therefore eligible uses for the BRF O&amp;M grant funds. Whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of the additional $184,966 of the BRF O&amp;M funds awarded to the city by MDE for FY 22 as provided here and above must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to accept grant funds from the Maryland Department of the Environment on behalf of the city of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of Bay Restoration Fund operation and maintenance funds in the amount of $184,966. And, be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's FY 22 general fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Subsection A, increase MDE revenue account number 60100-425800 by $184,966. Subsection B, increase WWTP HVAC construction expense account number 96216-513026-55519 by $100,500. Subsection C, increase WWTP electrical system upgrade design account number XXXX-513020-XXX by $180,000. Subsection D, increase WWTP electrical system upgrade construction account number XXXX-513026-XXX by $159,466. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 3, is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 5, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in the Section 5. Section 6, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments? Ms. Jackson?
No comments.
Ms. Blake?
None.
Mr. Boda?
Anything we can do to improve the consumption of electricity at our wastewater treatment plant is always a plus.
You're here. All right, hearing no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2699 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2699 for the first reading is approved by a vote of four to zero. Let me get a drink real quick.
Hi, April. I was just saying hi while he got a drink. Hi, Angela.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
If anybody wants, on the Zoom call, wants to speak, please identify yourself.
Yes, good evening. It's Mike Weisner.
Yes, Michael.
Okay, I'd like to speak, just the counsel. Let's see, first, I'd like to state I have no vested interest or benefit, or will benefit personally from the sale of this property or the non-sale of this property. At this point in my career, I'm 70 years old, I no longer invest in, or developing real estate. These comments mine are for the benefit of the city of Salisbury and its citizens, and not for personal gain. The ordinance tonight, which you are discussing, was originally approved evidently five years ago. But this is the first time it's come up in a number of years. So when I saw it on the agenda, I said, I better read it. And when I read it, I was very surprised at how poorly the city, the citizens of Salisbury fared in this deal. I think it's terrible. But this, as a matter of fact, this deal is entirely different than what was proposed five years ago. It's not just to rehash what was there. For example, in the resolution itself, in one of the whereas clauses, it says, "The parties have agreed to bend to amend the original LDA in its entirety." By the own definition in this resolution, this is an entirely new deal, it should go through an entirely new process, and be open to new bidders, to be fair to the citizens of Salisbury, to get a fair price for the land that the city of Salisbury had paid $473,000 for about 20 years ago. And also, I'd like to read a letter that I had submitted to the council and mayor, and I would have prepared it earlier had the public notice been given earlier. I didn't have the opportunity to do so. But before I read my letter, and to the record, which I think is appropriate, I would like to say that Ms. Jackson had a good question about surplus land. Just because the property is defined as surplus does not mean its value is zero. An example of that this evening is you just declared Mitchell Landing Surplus and sold it for $1,381,806. You didn't sell it for a dollar. Just declaring it surplus does not say what the value is, it just says the city no longer needs it. With those comments, I'd like to start my letter, which I circulated to the council mayor, so it may go in public record. Resolution 3137 concerns the sale of 2.4 acres of land adjacent to the port of Salisbury to a private developer. The project is called Marina Landing. The proposal is to build two five-story buildings, each with commercial space on the first floor, and 28 units above. The sale price is $1. You heard that correctly, $1. The city, the part of this land was part of a 4.57-acre parcel that the city bought in 1988 for $1,415,000. That's in 1988 dollars. The prorated share of the value of the land being sold on a square foot basis means the city in 1988 paid $743,000 for the same land that is now selling today in 2021 for a buck. As part of this deal, the developer would take responsibility for operating the marina. But the marina itself will still be owned by the city. The lease of the marina, which is basically just the boat basin, which is water, is for 50 years, with the developer having exclusive right to extend the lease for three additional 50-year periods. The operator retains all profits from operations during the term of the lease. However, the city is obliging itself to make all capital improvements for up to the next 200 years, all to the benefit of a private developer. And since filings, buckets, peers, et cetera, the constant replacement, that are expensive and ongoing costs, these expenses are going to be paid by the city, the city residents, and they will have zero revenue from it. The revenue accrued by these improvements will accrue to the developer, not to the residents of the city of Salisbury, who are selling this property for a buck. The developer will also receive a perpetual parking dedication for the existing 114 parking lot spaces located between the project and Brew River. I'm not sure how much the city paid to pave and develop this parking lot, but had to be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, not counting the cost of land. The city will receive no compensation for giving away these parking rights, but will still be responsible for the maintenance and the repair of this lot forever. It's forever because the city can never sell the land because it has given a perpetual right to the developer, who is buying the land for a buck next door. Since this land is located in central business district, it should be eligible for the New Horizons Tax Abatement Program, which means zero property taxes for the first five years. So no revenue there, reduce taxes for the next 15 years, so it's not going to pay its fair share till year 2042. Zero new property tax revenues, but increased costs for police, fire, public works, et cetera, caused by this project, and the increase in population will not be borne by the developer. It will be borne by the residents of the city.
Mr. Weisner, your time, the time is expired, but can you finish up in a couple minutes?
Yes, thank you. The city has a program to waive property, I'm sorry, water and sewer impact fees, as well as the numerous development fees and costs associated by, paid by developers. This project would be eligible for those costs, but the city will incur, but will not be reimbursed for, another giveaway. It is forward thinking to put surplus city property into either good use or back in private hands. private hands. It makes no sense to literally give it away, wouldn't have us pay for dearly, and increase the bottom line only for the developer, not to the benefit of the residents. The developer should be ecstatic about this deal. The citizens and taxpayers of our city should be appalled that deal is even being considered by our elected officials. The city should reject this resolution. If the city decides to sell the land in the future at a price that is fair and reasonable, then they should weep the proposal, start all over and do so with the goal of benefiting the city and its citizens and not just have the money go to a developer. I thank you for your time. I wish I could have said you much prior to the vote, but I do appreciate your time and the consideration of my remarks at this time.
Well, Mr. Weisner, that's why we have work sessions, and you could have had an opportunity also to discuss it at the work session. But I would like to comment, and I think the mayor would like to comment as well. First of all, you didn't mention at all about the future tax income for the city. I guess that's not important. Second of all, the position when this first came up, in terms of the housing availability, was much different than it is today. Third, it's interesting that because we really have no, we have an extreme shortage in housing, both rental and purchase, when I went to, when I was in business and based on capitalism, competition's a good thing. So it will take, but it will put more pressure certainly on landlords for coming in with, if they have to compete against somebody for their business, and that has to be remembered. I appreciate your outlook, but again, I think that it's misguided, but that's my personal opinion. Any other comments from any of the council people? Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Let's see here. Two annexations, major housing development, excuse me, two major housing developments, one of them on vacant urban land that has been sitting there fallow, doing nothing for us. A new gateway sign, emergency housing during cold weather, let's see, accepting state funds for designing the final bike lanes throughout our city, accepting the funding for providing mental health emergency services alongside our police officers, adding a third homelessness staffer, rapid rehousing, increasing pay for all of our police officers, and accepting a grant for our wastewater treatment plant. That's what our city council did tonight. The voices, or I should say, the voice of the alternative in the past is one that speaks to not solving the problems of our Salisbury residents like this council has done, and I think this administration has done tonight. So I applaud the council for making huge progress in the course of less than an hour and a half, and I think we should have more nights like this. So thank you all. I appreciate you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else in the audience or on Zoom want to make a comment? If not, we'll proceed with the council comments. Mr. Boda?
You know, just what the mayor was discussing on some of the things that we accomplished tonight, we accepted over $1 million in grants tonight for various things, from addressing homelessness, mental health issues, and supporting our law enforcement officers, plus the bike lanes. So I think there was a lot accomplished. I think, you know, mistakes in the past when governments attempt to be landlords or acquire property, governments are not very good landlords. And so I think, you know, selling Mitchell Landing is probably one of the best real estate decisions this city has made in decades. Offloading the Port of Salisbury Marina, even if it is for a dollar, we're getting out of that business. It's not something governments do. And surplusing our parking lots, it's, you know, they generally become an expense and don't generate that much revenue. So I think these are, it's a good philosophy to take these non-productive properties and make them productive. And I think that's the direction that we all have said, at least for the past six years, that we wanted to move into. So I think there's a lot tonight that we got accomplished in wrapping some of this up at the next meeting. I do have something that I need Andy to work on, okay? So this new Salisbury Police Mental Health Collaborative Partnership, I need you to come up with a name that's as catchy as swift.
Got it.
Okay? Because the letters there...
Yeah, I tried that.
Yeah, I don't speak Polish or Russian, and that's about what we were coming up with. So I just want to pass that on to Andy. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
I would like to extend a thank you. I have quite a bit to say today, this evening. For the West Side Mural Ribbon Cutting, I'd like to start by thanking the City of Salisbury, Salisbury Health and Community, Salisbury Arts and Entertainment, VFW 10159, artists Britt Flood, the families of the persons representing all the mural community and their host of dignitaries, and especially Julia Glens, the city administrator, because Julia was very instrumental in this as well as anybody else. And I'm sorry that we left Julia out Friday, but Julia was very instrumental in this, um, this piece of art, this history on the VFW in the West Side. Also, Angela, we're having the blood drive, December the 8th, at VFW 10159. Jack also, at 821 West Main Street from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. If anyone is interested, they can give me a call. My number is 410-726-8478. I did not know how low we were on plasma and blood. We're very low. Citizens, residents, if you are able to donate blood, please donate blood. Blood is very valuable, and we need it here in the City of Salisbury and on the eastern shore in the Delmar Peninsula. Also, I'm having a senior Christmas dinner and gift giveaway. So I do want to let people know, and we do have some seniors and jackets worn, senior, I'm a senior, Christmas dinner and gift giveaway at the Richard Hazel Youth Center. You have to be 60 years and older, and that will take place December the 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. So make sure you make it to the blood drive, make sure you make it to the senior Christmas dinner and gift giveaway if you're 60 and older. We're going to have a lot of fun out there. And I thank everybody today, you know, for a lot of things that have transpired in the last week with us and the city and how we've done things and how we've got things on the move, and the city has been moving in a positive direction. So citizens, residents, constituents, bear with us, we're going places. Have a good evening.
Thank you, April. Angela?
I think anything that I would have said has already been said. We're doing a good job, and please, if you're healthy enough, donate blood.
Thank you, Angela. Mr. Mayor? Good of the order? You're good, okay. I would like and encourage everyone to keep on their thoughts and prayers. The people who were in the parade in Wisconsin, what a tragedy. And there's just nothing you can say about it. And a few prayers would help. There are a lot of people right this evening that are struggling and trying to get their act together, and so please do that. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much, because the second day is actually better than the first day.
Yes.
And I also want to thank Operation We Care for another great job on Sunday.
Yes.
Yeah, April was there, I was there, the mayor was there, a lot of people there. And we packed 500 boxes for troops in northern Iraq, Poland? That's what he said.
Poland, so, Iraq, Poland.
And Africa.
That I'm not sure.
I think Jeff said Africa at the end, so. But anyway, there are going to be a lot of happy faces when they open those boxes, and those boxes were stuffed, so. Other than that, have a great night. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.